Here's Janelle.
And what does that say?
No alcohol.
You're up.
Oh, okay. Thought that was implied.
Yeah, right there. No, come up to the front row. I want to see your face.
Hi.
That's a if and only if I put it on the, the audience view. There we go. You don't have to sit there.
She'll take pictures of you and find the one where you're making a funny face like.
Well, that's what they do every day, especially the little ones.
Because I'm always making a funny face.
Well, and they're shorter than me, so it's always like. Like, thanks, that's a really flattering picture, thank you. Appreciate that. Luckily, I have control over that.
Oh, suddenly I got a new pledge of allegiance that's messed me up for fifty years now. I'm sure during Eisenhower's administration.
Before me. Been so long I've forgotten things. Actually, I was. I was born during Eisenhower. Kill you. Sorry, other man. Glenda knows. Glenda's the one that told me.
Aren't there like two or three up?
Hmm?
Sure. Is that what he's saying? You're gonna be. I did so many every time.
Because it's something about.
Blood in the streets.
A weird time during one of.
Oh.
Several months into.
I'm sure, am I ready? Ready or not. But then you realize there was another.
I just typically do it. More my smile, so I think it's smirking and I'm proud of it. That's my face.
Of doing that.
That's why I said anything.
R S M. Could be Sam, I'm always smiling.
But I didn't know about when we first brought cars.
Except when I'm playing soccer.
Almost every year.
I have my number base.
Thunder serious.
Playing at ten thirty tonight.
On caution signs.
I don't play indoor anymore. The awful hours.
Because I wore my pie shirt.
You wore your who shirt?
Nice. Pie Day.
Oh, it's International Mathematics Day?
It's Pie Day.
I, I, I realize the.
Math teacher.
Okay, but, but it is.
Several pies waiting for us, so how. We had pies at school today.
I know my five is in California.
Five's in California.
I heard a joke. Well, you have to be, Jason, you have to be a big geek. You have to be a big geek to celebrate Pie Day. Pie Day is just a fake holiday created by math companies to sell more math. Or a reason to eat pie, which we didn't eat today.
It worked.
Old Irons signs, huh? Low shade, man. My TVs aren't on? How come?
Chris is in the house.
Like, why not? Just.
We would have for about another minute.
I don't know which one is.
That cancels the whole thing.
That's where I do work.
It's being called because Chris is not here. Come back in two weeks.
Come on as soon as you connect. Come to the first meeting. Bear with me, it's been three months since I've been in this room to do anything. It's working great. I know I'm recording and it's streaming. Last time it didn't start streaming until twenty minutes after it started. Then you can see little miss's face just.
That's why he wants her. He's like, I'm gonna watch her during.
Okay, one's on. Not really. Ridiculous. You ready? Whenever.
We would like to welcome everyone to the first Roy City Planning Commission meeting of two thousand and twenty-three. Held in the Roy Municipal Building. Uh, we will begin with the pledge allegiance. Commissioner Brand will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Think you will move to the first agenda item. Any declarations of conflicts?
I, I have one. I'm the surveyor on administrative item four A. For that project, so.
So this, when we do that, does he step out or just sit there and?
So I, I had a couple of questions about that. So this is, uh, you're employed with the.
With the engineering firm, yes.
Uh, you don't have any, um, partnership rights or, or any ownership in the firm?
No.
Okay, so it's technically not.
Okay.
A financial conflict. There may be a conflict, uh, just in appearance only, which you can stay for the, a, a vote and you can. I, I'd still recommend having a vote, uh, to see if he's able to, to vote on that, that matter or not, so, but he can stay for that.
Okay.
Who are you?
Well, we'll get to that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Get to it, get to it.
I am.
Uh, I'm the, uh, I'm Matt Wilson, the Assistant City Attorney.
Oh, hi.
Hi.
I'm Sam.
Nice to meet you.
We'll move to item number two then, looking for approval for the December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two regular meetings, meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
We have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we've got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Nay. No.
He can't take you anywhere.
Not in public.
Okay, we have no legislative items. We'll move to item, agenda number four, administrative items. Uh, continuation of request for site plan and architectural approval for Starbucks located approximately at fifty-five ninety-one South, nineteen hundred West. Is the proponent here?
So just before you do take any action, though, like I said, I just recommend having a vote to see if Commissioner Felton can vote or not.
So we're supposed to vote on it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So we need to have a vote of, um, if Commissioner Felton can, um, sit in and vote also on it. Um, do we just roll call or just all in favor?
All in favor. You need a motion.
Okay, need a motion for it?
I, I would make a motion that Commissioner Felton be allowed to sit in this meeting, but I would also make a part of that motion be that he recuse himself from voting on this issue. That would avoid any appearance of conflict.
I second that motion.
Have motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Nay.
We haven't met often enough.
Okay. If you would please, please state your name and your address.
John, nineteen forty-six West Fifty-six Hundred South in Roy, um, representing Link Construction and Pat Burns, and we own the, the parcel on which, uh, the proposed Starbucks is, is to take place, or we're requesting approval for, for the site plan and the architectural design. So last time I was here, um, relatively new to the project, my coworker had been the lead, and I've been catching up to speed as best I can with, uh, working with the engineers to try to address the concerns and, and within the zone and the layout and, and, um, I'm requesting, you know, your consideration and, and review of that, um, and that to be approved upon conditions of city staff and working with them. I know parking, um, is, is a concern that was raised. I do have the numbers as far as with the, I, I got them today, the square footage, so we can do the calculation, because that was, um, something that was, was brought up. And with that, I'll do the best I can to, to field any kind of questions, but, um, uh, in talking with the engineers, they said, you know, we'll, we'll continue to work with the landscape and, and with, um, with those changes as necessary or needed, um, as deemed by you all and city staff.
Uh, does anyone have any questions for?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Yeah, okay. Um, Steve?
As mentioned, this is a continuation of, uh, site plan and architectural approval for Starbucks there on nineteen hundred West. Um, again, just to refer or re- remember, reference your memory, there we go, of where it's located. Um, kind of the small rectangle you see in the middle is about the location it would be on the property. I got a, a site plan that was, uh, submitted in December of two thousand and twenty-two that you first looked at. Um, you can kind of tell where the, the building is, the parcel is, and how they would, um, landscape the area, the drive-through, um, and stuff. Uh, the modifications for this meeting. There weren't a lot of changes. The building did change a bit. Um, and location of dumpster did move it. Well, no, it's not dumpster, it's a patio. Um, but the concerns within the, the DRC comments, the planning one, is the parking lot, because it is a continuous parking lot for dilly-dallys, the smoke shop, the nail shop, the restaurants. Um, we're losing about forty-eight percent of the parking stalls. Um, with that comes the requirement to bring today's standards into the parking lot, which requires landscaped islands at the end and after every eight stalls. Um, the concern staff has is, is that will change dramatically the look and feel of the, the, the overall site. Um, it wouldn't change necessarily the location of Starbucks building itself, but it will affect quite a bit of, of the overall site. Um, architecturally, in December, they brought kind of this, the, the typical Starbucks building that you see, didn't really address it to what, um, nineteen hundred itself, because when you look at, back at the site plan, it, it not only just showed, you see the kind of the building has a little notch out. Well, it has a canopy going over to, to address the street. So the, the original one really didn't show that, didn't address the street. So when you look at the new designs, which is atypical of, of Starbucks, which I, I like, um, the eastern elevation is what would front fifty-six hundred, or nineteen hundred West. So they really haven't addressed how the building glass-wise and stuff would, would address the street. Um, the, the ordinance requires the main entry to be off or from the street from nineteen hundred West, and it's actually on the other side of the building, facing the parking lot. Um, really, that's the only other, other employee door to get into the building, so they haven't necessarily addressed all the concerns the staff had. Now, granted, like I said, the site plan wise, the building is not going to move much. It will affect the way the, the rest of the parking lot looks, but building wise, it will affect, you know, how do they get a door to address the street to come off of it? Because that's what the ordinance requires. We're trying to appeal to the, to the road, not necessarily the parking behind. That will cause more issues with the building itself, which will probably also cause the site plan to change. Um, so staff would still have the recommendations of tabling it, um, just on those, those bases alone.
Any questions?
Steve, how does the redevelopment of fifty-six hundred in this area, how does that affect anything?
Um, it, a little bit, but not sure, because UDOT changes their mind weekly.
On what, fifty-six hundreds?
Yeah, north of them where Hartz cleaners are, and then you got a couple other buildings, they were, have been told for years that their buildings will be purchased in total acquisition and torn down. Well, I met with one of them today and they told him a couple of weeks ago, no, you're not going to be torn down, because we've run out of money. So I, I really don't know what UDOT is doing. Um, within the, the DRC comments, a letter from UDOT is required, because again, they're fronting nineteen, which is UDOT Road. So, you know, UDOT will have to get with them to purchase whatever they need on nineteen and fifty-six, but how much, I don't know. Knowing that, you know, they're whittling down this project as they go, I don't know. But yeah, the applicant is aware of the need to get with UDOT.
Okay. Thank you, Steve.
Uh-huh.
Steve, when you go back to the plot plan, it shows the parking. You say there's additional landscape that is going to be required in addition to this. How is it going to affect the rest of the?
We'll lose more stalls.
We lose more stalls, okay?
Because there's.
Question for you then.
Yes.
If you spoke with dilly-dally and the rest of the people in there, how do they feel about it?
I have not personally. And that's some of the, he's.
Not a bad idea.
Yeah. One of the questions was, is how much square footage does all those places have, so we can figure out what the parking demand there is? It may come out that what's going to end up being is enough. Right. But until I knew that, I couldn't say how it's going to affect it, what's going to affect and stuff like that. So up until I can get that information, you know, as, I, I can't guess, I just assume that it's going to change it.
Okay. I'm also curious, there's this, um, kind of like a parking lot to the other side by the pawn shop. Is that considered part of that building's parking or not?
Uh, yes and no.
Okay.
Um, can you imagine parking over there and wanting, walking to the restaurant, the Indian restaurant, or dilly-dallys? It's more associated with, um, Dill Depot and the construction and Lolo Hawaiian than it is to dilly-dallys and, and that. And, and technically, it's on its, it's a separate parcel as well, so this parking lot and the proposed Starbucks is all in one parcel.
Okay, that's why I was wondering how much of this.
Yeah.
Was all one, yeah. And I have noticed also some on that one side, as you drive in from fifty-six hundred, um, that they have cars there, they're maybe for sale or something, and I'm assuming that's part of the business, not part of their parking.
Yeah, it's part of the Dill Depot. They also have a, a small car lot.
Okay, I just wasn't sure how that worked either, so, okay.
The prime cars are parked there. The other ones are in the back.
Okay.
If we table this to our next regular meeting next month, would that give you guys enough time to work out?
I, I wouldn't necessarily say a particular meeting time.
Okay.
Make it, you know, if you table it.
We just table it and you will put it back on whenever.
Yeah, until the applicant and staff have come up with an appropriate that can be approved, you know. I'd hate to say next month, we come next month and we're still, you know, figuring out everything.
We've been figuring everything out for a decade.
Oh, well.
I know. When you do, let me know. I need all the advice I can get.
Okay.
Any other questions? No, we'll look for a motion.
I'd make a motion to table, uh, agenda item four A, and, until, uh, Steph recommends it, be come back on the calendar.
Can we do those together or do they have to be separate?
No, if you're tabling it, both can be together.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Is that a roll call or? Okay. All in favor of tabling? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay?
Okay.
Yeah, the only time I want roll call is when it's a legislative item.
Okay.
Thank you for your time and thank you for your help, Steve.
Yeah.
I appreciate you.
Look forward to seeing you again.
Yes.
Move on to the next item, uh, request for site plan and architectural approval for Taco Bell located approximately twenty-seven forty-six West, four thousand South.
I know they were trying. Uh, the main guy is actually at a state. Uh, they were trying to get someone to come. Uh, they were hoping they could do this via Zoom, but TI or our IT department was like, it would be so, it's difficult at best. Um, they've seen that in the council where it works and doesn't work and, um, so, uh, we could, you know, if you want to postpone this a little bit and see if they come. Um, I don't think it would be necessarily bad if I just represented it. I know the commission likes to have that proponent here, but it's really a, a pretty simple site plan and simple architectural, that I could go through it with you.
Yeah, you don't have any many, or any recommendations for changing much of the stuff either.
There's not a lot. Um, I do have in the presentation, one change that they wanted to make to the building. Um, if you, but we, you know, depending on how you want to do this.
I'm okay with Steve presenting.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So again, this is consider a, a site plan and architectural review for Taco Bell. Um, down there by seven eleven Starbucks and Autozone, um, they're on four thousand South and Midland. I'm just kind of giving you an idea of the property that we're looking at. Seven eleven is the one building to the left. Autozone's the one to the north and, um, northwest is the Starbucks. It's actually pretty finished right now. I saw moving stuff in last week, so hopefully it's open.
Yeah, it is open.
Site plan wise, sorry, it's just, I had to squish it down, but, um, you got the building kind of next to that green area. Uh, landscaped wise, they've, they've done a really good job of, um, integrating it and making it a, a kind of a nice feature. Um, I know some of the concerns I had with, um, the drive-up window, because I'm hoping they're busy. And, you know, as you see some of those places that are busy, you got cars scattered everywhere of how to do it. Um, so part of the recommendation was that Taco Bell come up with some sort of plan as if it was an issue. Um, so what they proposed is in between the trees, kind of the bottom left, where the drive-up window is, they'd put cones. So you'd have to drive all the way around to come to it. That would just be a temporary fix for those moments when they are busy. Otherwise, from their calculations, the two drive-up lanes to the one should be sufficient enough to, to meet their needs. It's definitely more than we require per ordinance. Uh, you need three cars, um, plus the window, so, uh, they've met, met that pretty well. But again, temporarily, if they ha- see a problem coming up, they would go cone it off to make everybody kind of pass around, almost to seven eleven, come back and then come back around. Um, one of the concerns we had, oops, was, and I gave it to you wrong. Anyway, one of the buildings, I'd asked, you know, how is the building addressing the street? And beyond the, the landscaping, uh, which is, you know, fairly thick and they, the top one is kind of how they originally had it, where that black box is what would be facing the street. Granted, it's the back of the building, usually it's not a big issue, but they had two proposals, which you see in the next two below it. Um, it would just be an artificial window, uh, because that's where their, um, cold storage is, but it gives that appearance that there is some sort of window that is addressing the road. This particular zone, the community commercial, doesn't have the same requirements as downtown, where you have to have a door on the street and, and stuff. So to me, the bottom one is kind of where they're leaning to, kind of having a faux window that looks like a window, blacked out, that you, you know, but it still gives that appearance that there's something that you could see out. Um, I, they've been great to work with, sending in, you know, quick responses to how they're going to do things, how they'll, they'll solve that. So I, I think, you know, if we go with, with this option of how they're proposing it, it can, it, it meets the building, uh, requirements for materials, colors and everything else, and that window, again, solves that issue. Um, so staff would recommend approval of both the site plan and architectural review, subject to the, the conditions stated in the staff report.
And we can do them both at the same time?
Uh, because, yeah, if you're going to approve it or deny it, do them separate. If you're tabling, it's okay as one.
And I actually have a question before.
Go ahead, Janelle.
Um, so I'm curious, because this is against residential.
It is. Well, it's against the residential use, but not zone.
Right, but I mean, people live there.
Right.
Right now, yeah. And so I'm just wondering, um, because I see all this landscaping and different things, I'm just wondering what that all entails. Is there, are they building some kind of extra barrier there or what's the?
They will put, especially where the ordering menu box is, and then granted, this is not by ordinance, because it's zone to zone, not zone to, to use.
Right.
Um, they will put up a six-foot wood fence.
Okay.
Uh, along there and, um, lighting wise, they're, they're making sure that they're not spilling over anything. So they're, they are going above what the ordinance requires. Now, if it was a residential zone.
Mm-hmm.
Then a lot more things would come, come into play, but it's a commercial zone, so at any point, those residents could go away.
Okay, I was just curious if they took that into consideration. It sounds like they did.
They're concerned with it, and that's why they did heavily landscape that area, and they did have a fence that they're put up.
I also just want to comment that I do really like the creativity of the, the faux window. Um, I think that that will look nice there. I do drive that road every day, so have a really good idea of what it will kind of look.
And it'd be heavily more landscaped than the rest of the complex, especially along four thousand.
Yeah, it has a lot more, yeah.
So.
I am a little still concerned about how the traffic will flow through there, but it sounds like they have tried to address that as well, so I appreciate that as well. Those are just all my comments, so.
Just a functionality thing that I noticed I wanted to point out, coming off of four thousand, you know, turning in, coming in off four thousand, and then coming into the drive-through, that's a hard turn there. Is there any thought on how that, I mean, that's off a state highway coming in.
Four thousand's not a state highway.
Oh, not, not through there, it's not anymore, okay.
East or west of Midland it is, but east of it is not.
It's still a heavy traffic.
It is a tight corner, um, and they've tried to address it as best they can.
Okay.
Now, it was part of the concern of lots of vehicles is, you know, all of a sudden I get ones turned into that, another one, now I've gotten issues of getting in. So they've said that they'll have a plan together to temporarily close that area to make them kind of go a bigger loop around.
Okay.
Has the city thought about addressing that, now that we have more businesses down there, maybe with a churn lane, a bigger churn lane further down or something? Because there isn't really a churn lane either.
Turn lane.
On four thousand.
Into this development?
And to, I mean, you, there's kind of one when you turn to Maverick, but there's not anything to turn into.
Well, there is a, a slight.
Yeah.
Deceleration lane right there as you get towards Midland, so they've already.
I'm just wondering if there's any way to, I mean, or is that something I go as a citizen and tell the council to look at?
Well, again, it's one of those that, when the subdivision came in and was built.
Mm-hmm.
That's, this is how it was built.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah.
So they don't really have ability to change the access point or anything.
Is that median there between east and westbound?
There's no median.
No.
Well, there, there is at the turn light. Nah, no, there's not, nevermind.
No. It's just, it's a really big intersection.
UDOT widen that area mainly because of Midland, but once you start getting farther east on it, it narrows down.
Okay.
But if it was a regular city road, we don't have that requirement.
Okay. Yeah, because it is a city road right there.
Yeah, it's only thirty-five. Yeah, it's only thirty-five miles an hour, so to slow down shouldn't be, take that long.
Just a busy, busy intersection, like I said, I drive it every day, so. But I do appreciate that they did take some of that into consideration. It sounds like they did see, foresee that there might be, they don't want to, like, backing up of cars or whatever right there, that would be a pretty big disaster.
And again, that's kind of above and beyond our ordinance, so.
So I'm saying I appreciate that they considered that.
Any other questions, comments? And we would look for a motion for the site plan?
Yeah, make a motion that we approve the site plan for Taco Bell, approximately twenty-seven forty-six west, four thousand south.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Can I ask why?
I just think it's, I would rather that the, they went the other direction for the entrance instead of the exit, if that makes sense, so. But I, it's not something that necessarily I can change, I'm just saying that that's why I would vote. No, nay.
And then we look for a motion for?
Make a motion that we approve the architectural review with conditions and that are state, that are all current and future DRC review comments are complied with along with any conditions stated in the staff report.
All second.
And we've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay?
Motion passes.
Motion passes. We'll move to item number C. Or I guess, not a number C, but just C. Request for site plan and architectural approval for Oakley Roasting, located approximately thirty-five fifty-one west, fifty-six hundred south. Is a proponent here? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Good evening, my name's Wes Graham. I'm at two seventy-one Gary Way in North Salt Lake. As mentioned, we, we are looking to do a commercial development there in the parking lot of South Fork Hardware. There we go. It's a zoned commercial pad there on fifty-six hundred south. The plan is for a coffee shop called Oakley Roasting. It's a local Utah based coffee shop that's just getting started here. We are the developers, I represent Iron Horse Development, hired by Oakley Roasting to, to build this. And we, yeah, we've been working with Steve on this. We had a meeting yesterday. I know in your notes and in the memo that you all received, I believe he, he mentioned that he recommends architectural review, but the site plan, he mentioned that there's some issues. Since he is, Steve sent that, I, we've since had an opportunity to meet and address those issues. And I do have an updated site plan that I'd like to pass out, if that's okay?
Sure.
Okay. Okay. All right, so ever, Andy, you got a copy, Steve?
I didn't, but I'll, I'm sure they'll leave one.
All right. So as mentioned, we've since addressed those concerns that Steve mentioned in the memo. Yesterday, Steve and I had a meeting, sat down, went through these changes, and I feel like we've been able to address all of them to the point where I feel like we, we have the support. And I don't want to put words in Steve's mouth, I'll let him speak to that, but if you go to that email or the, the memo, there was a list of about ten comments or, or questions or concerns on the site plan. The scale on the, we corrected the scaling on the, the site plan, so that was fixed. The big concern, or one of the, the concerns was the drive aisle is reduced. As you now pull into the driveway, it is reduced. So the question was asked, how do we plan on directing traffic? We've come up with a solution, we will put directional arrows and we're, we'll go above and beyond on directional signage to make sure that no one's confused or, or thrown off as they enter the, the shopping center there. The other big concern was, according to this, this ordinance, it states that no drive through facilities shall be located, or let's see, drive through facilities or drive through windows shall be located in any exterior building wall facing residential zoning district boundary. Originally, in that original site plan, I don't know, Steve, if you have that or, or if you have it in front of you, okay. Originally, we, the thought was to have the menu board and the ordering box there on the, what would be the west side, at the top of the screen, which would be facing the, the residential homes. We weren't aware of that, that ordinance, so in order to meet the ordinance, we, we'd be willing to, you'll see where I circled in blue on this new site plan, we'd be willing to move the menu board and ordering box there, so it's no longer facing the residential homes. And I, I, I believe that was, was the, the main concern on that comment there. So we, we'd love to address that and, and fix that. Other than that, we, I believe everything else, and I don't know, Steve, if you want to talk to it, but I believe we've answered everything else. I'd be happy to go through the list, but I'm not sure if you want to address first or? You want to wait, okay, great, okay, no problem. So again, those are the, the two main issues was the, the directional signage and directional arrows and the, the ordering box facing the residential, which we have since fixed. The parking stalls, we were able to, to meet with Steve and, and get that squared away. We're, we're going to have limited, very minimal seating inside the, the coffee shop. We see this mostly as a drive through use. So I think there's five or six seats inside planned for now and a table or two outside, so maximum of eight seats outside, so a, a total of thirteen, fourteen total seats. The, the code calls for one parking stall for every four potential customers. So you'll see, we're, we have above and beyond the, the amount of, of parking necessary for the code. We got the note on the mechanical equipment that must be screened. That's completely our intention. We, we will make sure that all the mechanical HVAC equipment is, is screened off from any of the residential to the west there. The dumpster, after meeting with Steve, we, we are planning on, if, if you have the rendering, I don't know, could you bring up the renderings? So this is the, the architectural renderings that our architect has put together. Our dumpster enclosure will be of similar finishes as the building. Most likely not the stone, that would be the nicest dumpster enclosure out there, but it'll, it'll likely be the, the tile or the, the metal siding there. So we'll, we'll make it match and look similar to the, the building itself. We do have the dumpster at least twenty feet away from the residential, so that, that's been noted. And the islands and the landscaping, you'll notice we're not changing any existing landscaping in the center. We will be adding some planter boxes in front of our building to add some greenery and some just different aesthetic, but because they're, they're minimal, there's only four planter boxes, that'll just be hand watered, so no irrigation plan needed for those. So that, I, with that one, I, I believe we've now addressed the, the issues. And so, again, based on my meeting with Steve, and I, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but having addressed those issues now, I feel like we have complied to, to the ordinance and, and feel like we do comply and are ready for a, a site plan approval on this.
Okay, thank you. Steve, turn it over to you.
Okay, I'll go through my usual spill before I give my opinion. Again, this is consider a request for site plan and actual architectural approval for Oakley Roasting. They're on fifty-six hundred south. Just in an aerial location of where it is. If you go down South Fork Hardware or Twisted Sugar, or I think there's a couple other nice places down there. There is a, a parcel there that exists, was subdivided off when they recorded a plat. Just no one has, has been, has used it, so until now. So site plan wise, as mentioned, there were a few concerns. The biggest one being the, the facilities of a drive through window. Speaking with Matt, our city attorney, assistant city attorney, whatever his title is, we were in, in accordance or agreed that it's really that squawk box and menu board. You're going to have traffic, you know, if it, if it was there and parking, people driving back and forth. So the traffic really isn't an issue, it's more of the, the menu board and the, and squawk, I call it squawk box, the ordering box or whatever. So as long as that was not directed to the residents in south or east, they could be fine. So by moving that around to the south side of the building, that really satisfies, in my opinion, that, that biggest requirement. Reason why I say the biggest, because that could change, you know, the building could have flipped or, or whatnot. So that's really where my tabling this came from was, don't know how we're going to, that's going to be solved. But after speaking with them and just putting it on the south side, it really solves the, the concern. Everything else is pretty minimal. The number of parking stalls required by this, you know, one per, one stall per four seats, they need four. They've got at least twelve just in the front. So parking wise, we, we have no issues. And again, the little things, you know, the dumpster, what does it look like? It's easy fix. Moving the dumpster twenty feet, easy fix, so it's not going to cause huge issues to the site plan itself. The minute, you know, finite details, yes, it will change some things, but not of concern for, for this body to, to look at it. Architecturally, I told them yesterday, this actually would meet the building standards of downtown. Actually, I wish it was downtown, just having the, the swoop, you know, the, the part of the roof going up and diagonal, kind of large overhangs, nice materials, you know, so it really would fit downtown. It looks great down here as well. Actually, it might be the opposite of an eyesore in the area. It might cause the other buildings to have to revamp themselves, hopefully, but architecturally, it, it meets in every aspect I can, I could imagine. Screening is, is fairly simple and they've already told me how they were going to do that, so it would meet. So even though my report says tabling the site plan and recommending approval of the architecture, if you feel that the things that have been talked about to solve those, these issues have been satisfied, I'd recommend approval of the site plan as well.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I just had a question, it said that plan showed no sight lighting. Is that something you guys talked about?
They're not going to put any light poles or anything? There's none there now, I don't think.
It'll just be building signage, yeah, nothing, no new poles or anything.
All right, yeah, that was the only thing.
And that, and that's not a requirement per code, so it's just a question I always ask, especially around residential zones.
Okay.
If it's commercial to the west of it, that wouldn't even have come up.
And I agree with Steve, I love that design. It's really nice, I think it'll add to the area for sure.
Oh, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? We'll look for a motion.
Motion.
The motions.
Two motions.
All right, make a motion that we approve the site plan of Oakley Roasting, approximately thirty-five fifty-one west, fifty-six hundred south.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? Okay, that motion passes.
All right, make a motion that we approve the, what is it, architectural plan of Oakley Roasting, approximately thirty-five fifty-one west, fifty-six hundred south.
I second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? Motion passes, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you all. And thanks, Steve.
And we'll.
Do you want these back?
No, no.
We'll move to item number five, election of chair and vice chair for twenty twenty-three.
Do I do that? I'll, I'll go ahead and take this one over. As you know, every year, we've got to elect and reelect a, a chair. Ryan Kelly's kind of been acting as chair and Claude has been acting as, as vice chair, so we'll open up nominations for chair.
Nominate Ryan Kelly to be chair.
I second.
Any other nominations?
May I nominate Janelle for chair?
You can.
All right, I'll do.
Oh, thanks. I was like, can I ask to not have that?
And a second to that nomination? It's not that they don't like.
You don't want them to have to leave while we're focused.
They don't want us, you suffer through it. The other issue is she's still an alternate, so.
Yeah, I was going to say I'm an alternate, so. I appreciate it, it was very kind.
See, no other nominations? See, lack of second kind of gets you kind of out of it. All approve, all in favor of Ryan?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, so nominations for vice chair.
Nominate Claude Payne for vice chair.
Only here three months.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, yeah, that's what I was wondering who.
We only had that conversation, what, half an hour ago?
I'll nominate Jason Felton, co-chair.
I'll second that. Hold on. Nom was felt by Collins. Who seconded it?
I did.
Payne, of course.
I'm still in my first term, folks.
Still have a second for Payne.
But he said he's only here three months. Yeah.
He's here till end of, end of June.
So what happens if he gets elected and then he's gone? We have to do this.
You're revoting for a new one.
Sorry. Can I second?
He nominated, so. We're, we're not in the state legislation where you can propose it, make a motion to approve or make motion and then approve it.
Motion for a legislative change?
Okay, with no, no second for the nomination of Payne, all in favor of Felton?
Aye.
And the opposed?
Aye.
Sorry, buddy.
Or nay, whichever.
So you only have to do it when Ryan's not here, which apparently has been.
It's a lot.
And now, lately.
Okay, with that, turn it back over to you.
You walk in and your heart kind of sinks when you see your name in the middle.
Thanks. He's like, I quit. Janelle, you're on.
We'll go to item number six, commissioner's minute. Anyone have anything to bring up? Or comments? If not, we'll move to item number seven, staff update.
Wow, where to begin or what do you?
Wow, where to begin or what do you want to know? Uh, just as an FYI, I think last meeting we talked about the modern income, no, it wasn't. That was meetings before, modern income housing, anyway. That did get accepted by the state, so we're in complete compliance with the, the ordinance or the statute requiring, um, so thank you for your help with that. We are towards the tail end of the station area plan. Um, thank you for those who came to the open house, uh, and cast your vote on which option you liked. We did have a, an okay turnout, but, you know, it was par of other public open houses I've ever had, so. Um, we did get an option. I believe they're, they're looking to do a joint work session to have that presented to everybody, and it probably is the twenty-eighth, but I got to confirm that, but I will let you know. Again, the consultant just wants to present kind of what they found, what, where they're going. Um, make sure that you didn't have, you and the council don't have any changes you want done before they, they write it. So hopefully we have that, uh, approved and adopted, um, kind of late spring, early summer. So, um, we're working on that. Uh, the developments around the town are, are gung ho. Abington Heights up on Hinckley and nineteen is, if you see, there's quite a few of those being built and under construction. Forty-three hundred West, our Park Forty-three's got three buildings up, if not the fourth coming. The subdivision by, um, Charter Elementary there on Midland is begun. They don't have any building permits yet, they're just still putting in the pipelines and getting ready for curb gutter and sidewalk and stuff like that, so. But they will be submitting plans soon. They got to get that water line in for some fire safety issue, I, but, um, so I don't know if there's other things you have questions on. Kind of already talked about fifty-six hundred South, as you drive down it, it looks like a ghost town, at least on the south side. I think there's at least a dozen and a half homes now that are gone, um, and I know we have quite a few more demo permits to, to issue. From my understanding, Wells Fargo, I think is supposed to leave by, in April. I haven't heard about Wendy's, and, um, so it's, it's moving along. I, I jokingly say, you know, they've run out of money, but, you know, every time we, they have a meeting, it kind of seems they've scaled the project back a little bit, especially along nineteen hundred. Uh, there was quite a few buildings on the northwest side and over the southeast side that were going to be taken, and right now it looks like they're not. Some landowners are happy that they're not, and some are kind of upset they're not. I think one in particular wanted to just say, I'm done, and, and walk away, but, um, we'll try to, to help facilitate them and help them with, with anything that they need. I know Brody, it's, Brody and the mayor had sent out letters to everybody, uh, down there, you know, seeing if anybody needed, had questions or things that they could help with, so, uh, we'll, we'll keep working with them. Uh, the other aspect is, as you can see, I have a new partner in crime next to me. Um, his name is Matt Wilson. I'll let him kind of introduce where he came from and any questions you have. Sorry, kind of, it's at the tail end of the meeting, we get to introduce people, so.
Um, so Matt Wilson, I actually started here at Roy back in December. Um, I come from Weber County, the Weber County Attorney's Office. I started out prosecuting there, moved to our civil division for about two and a half, three years, went back to prosecution, realized my mistake and came out to Roy then, so. Still is prosecuting, for the time being at least, yeah.
Okay, I'm curious, what do you mean for the time being? Are we going to have another prosecutor?
Uh, maybe.
Okay.
Yeah.
He's kind of taken Brody's position as prosecutor.
Yeah, right, right.
He got promoted or demoted, whichever way you look at it.
He has another job.
As assistant city manager slash community economic development director.
Right.
So we had to hire Matt.
Had to hire somebody.
As you may or may not know, Andy Blackburn has retired.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't know that.
So there is a city attorney's position no longer open. It was open and then closed, so they've already done interviews and I think he'll be, they'll be introduced next week in the council meeting.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Condolences.
Ryan knows him really well, and I think he wanted to be here to make fun of him, so.
Yeah, I, I did work with Ryan regularly when he was at the county, so.
Other than that, do you have any questions or anything you'd like to know about? Project or two, or?
I did see that Cup Bop moved into the one over by, uh.
Haven't moved in yet.
Oh, but they're going to, they have a sign at least, right?
Is the sign already up?
They're just a little like.
Oh, yes. Yeah, they, they're going to be in front of Windcall there on thir- thirty-five hundred West, they're going to do a tenant finish. That's why I'm surprised the sign, because it just barely got approved, so.
They got excited.
A little temporary sign then, yeah. I, I've heard of rumblings of others, but I have, don't know who, so.
Okay. I was curious about that, so I'm glad you said that.
There's, you know, after three months, I don't know what you, what you guys know about, not know about, or need updating on.
Okay. If nothing else, we'll move to item number eight.
I make a motion for, they'll be adjourned.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Yeah, well.
Uh, motion passes, we are adjourned.
Every time.
Thanks, everyone. The sad part, Chris, is already in the draft minutes, I already have you saying no.
Ah, I'm too predictable, I changed it up.
That's the first time you did it when I asked for it.
There you go. I'll do whatever you say, co-chair.
Thank you, that's the first time you did it when I asked for it, so. Going away.